Hi, good morning. I'm gonna call to order this, uh, work session. Perry's Board of Education on Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty-three. Um, we will start with the, uh, roll call, please, Mr. Drew.
Ms. Laramo.
Yeah.
Mrs. Eubank. Dr. Rufford.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, well, next item is the safety briefing. Perry'sburg Schools welcomes you to the Hall Prairie Intermediate building. Thank you for attending this morning's Board of Education work session. We care about the safety of our students, staff, families, and guests. Please note the exits to either side of you, and you are located at twenty-five four eighty Hall Prairie Road. Thank you for joining us and supporting Perry'sburg Schools. Next tenant, I will take a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pullman, Dr. Rufford. And roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Ms. Laramo.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes, so, uh, so this is good, nice change of venue, fun to do, haven't done this in a while. Probably been, I mean, three, four years. Yeah?
I was happy there wasn't a train.
Yes.
There's three on the way here, yeah.
And I appreciate Mr. Best and his staff accommodating and hosting us this morning, so. With that, I think we're gonna turn it straight over for the treasures report. Mr. Drew.
All right, good morning, all. What a great way to start, man, you get to talk about the five-year forecast. So, um, what I wanna do this morning, so obviously, just jump into this. Five-year forecast, twice a year. We gaze out in the future and, uh, and make our financial projections and, uh, I thought this was a kind of appropriate, some things we know and some things we don't know, right? Um, and so, you know, and in all seriousness, it's one of those things, this is serious, but at the same time, we have to recognize that, uh, you know, none of our crystal balls are probably that great. And just a reminder, you know, twice a year, that the, the board has to approve a five-year forecast, and it has three main purposes. Now, the main one is to engage in conversation about our, you know, where we are financially, some long-term planning, and, um, you know, and that's, again, that's the most important part of this, so. At this point, the five-year forecast is not final by any means, won't be until you approve it, um, at a regular meeting, so. Well, I'm gonna share some things, and I really need your feedback on it, if you think you're crazy, or you're, or, or on board, or you're okay with that, because in the end, I want it to be, you know, our forecast. It's the basis for our Core Twelve Certificate, which just means that Tom and I sign off since we have the money to pay the bills, right? We entered a contract that we have the money to do that. And then, on the negative side, if you will, ODE and state auditor use this, this data, if you will, to identify districts at risk. Okay. Um, just a couple of things, and it's kinda repetitive, but this is a forecast, a snapshot of time, at this particular time, right? So, lots can change, and as I'll show you, some things have changed in the forecast of November. It's based on a particular set of assumptions, and that's what I wanna spend some time on today. Um, talking about some of those assumptions, and recognize our state budgets aren't a biennial basis, so looking past two years is, you know, it gets murkier, and even with this current biennial budget, we're making some, uh, making some assumptions until the end of June, and chances are from the last couple of bienniums, they wait till the last minute to get it passed. And of course, the work in progress. I'm, I play in, if you look at the number of scenarios I have built, I play with it all the time, what if tweaking this and that, and we talk about budget items, can we do this, and I fill that, the numbers in there. And this will be up, I will be in your, in the notes, but there's lots of places I send people to. And you, you know, you can go back years, looking at five-year forecasts and assumptions and all that kind of stuff, for every district in Ohio, and it's, it's all out there on ODE's website. All right, that's the five-year forecast. Looks like any questions? The format for every district's the same, so I just throw it up there, just kinda as a, that, that's what they look like, if you pull them off, they always look that way. So let me start with, I wanna talk about where the difference between November and today, so. We're looking at, we're looking at the last two months of this fiscal year, and really next year and, and beyond, so. Back in November, this was the forecast, and, and I just pulled the revenue and expense, and we'll get into details, but I had forecasted, we'd end the year positive spending, two hundred ninety thousand, and then we're in deficit spending next year and, and beyond. Now, the, um, the big negatives, of course, there, part of that is there, I was, that's our levy that we're gonna have to renew and replace. Like, take it out at the top, 'cause I'm not gonna assume it's passed, and we'll put it down at the bottom. The, the number that really is concerning is, is the cash balance, um, line twelve point oh one is healthy cash balance the next couple of years, and then, when the, when that levy goes away, we go negative very quickly, right? So, that fourteen million dollars, when it goes away, it's, and as you'll see, it can't go away, or you're talking about some, so that's, that's where we were in, um, November, so. You know, focus on these two, two years, obviously, there's a ripple effect out, but from, from, from May to November, I want you to focus on these two years, 'cause that's where the, you see the changes. Okay, so, this is what I'm talking about this year, so. The good news is, if you look at this year, I had a little over two, almost three hundred thousand positive, we're looking at more than closer to two million positive this year. And I'll show why here in a minute, and next year, instead of being negative, we, we have a really good shot to be net positive. So, and then there's some things going on there, but we're still back in that negative, starting two thousand twenty-five, again, driven a lot by, by the levies, levy cycle at that point, so. The May forecast, our bottom line versus November, is looking, looking much, much, much better. And side by side, you can see, you could, you could, you could see the differences. See the differences there, so. Any questions on this before I move into why the, the, the main changes? Hopefully, it's good news, it's, you know, um, try to, I, I try to be conservative, but not that conservative, kinda little chagrin that we're much more pos, it's like, you wanna be positive, but not, you know, and, but you wanna be able, to be able to count on, so what has changed? On the revenue, the revenue side is the big change, our income tax revenue is up all ten percent year over year. And so, it's, and so, and I had predict, uh, forecast increase, but not, but more than I, it's up more than I had forecasted, so this is an increase over what had been forecasted. And so, our interest revenues up. There's a million dollars right there, just in, in, in revenue, and the economy, for better or worse, right? It's, it's one of those catch-twenty-twos where, um, interest revenue is up because of interest rates, right? And so, and inflation really has helped us in that, in, on that side of the ledger.
To a negative, that's not a negative.
No, no, it's a dash, it's a dash. Good catch. Yeah, no, 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 and expense side, we're, 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 our, our personnel expenses are down versus forecast, and benefits down a little bit versus forecast, so. And that's the bulk, I mean, there's some other little things in there, but we just, we've, um, you know, there's some things on the personnel side not doing, and, and, um, not, in some cases, not, 'cause we couldn't find people, right? And so, it's like, you know, transportation, some of the stuff we've had to do, say, actually, it's, it's, it's been a struggle for that department, but you, you save a few, a few dollars, you know, here and there. Yeah, so, those kinds of things are, are, are saving, so. And then, and this is just a reminder, so, you know, we look at the end of the year cash balance. And, and so, at the end of that, that June, that's where we end the year, so I always wanna point out that end-of-year cash balance, that's an important indicator, but that doesn't keep me up at night, what keeps me up at night is what the cash balance looks like in January and February. Uh, because that's, you know, even as you look in the out years, you could have a four or five million dollar cash balance, or if you look at, um, two thousand, um, twenty, that green line, our cash balance in June was, you know, about four million dollars, but we're, they're probably struggling to make payroll back in January and February, that, before that, so. That end-of cash balance is important, but just recommend, recognize, that's like our second lowest point, point of the year, and there's a lower point than that, so. So, you know, people like to talk about ca, healthy cash balances, but again, it's not, it's not straight, it's not a flat line. Okay, so let's talk revenue, I'm doing it a little bit differently this year, hopefully you like it. Here's all revenue lines, but let me just talk about some of the key assumptions. Um, general property tax, we've already talked about that, we're looking at a twenty percent valuation increase in Wood County, um, in two thousand twenty-three, and worth a twenty mil floor. That'll generate some additional revenue. I'm assuming one percent annual growth due to, due to new construction. That's about thirteen and a half to fourteen million dollars a year. But on, on over a billion dollars in total valuation, it's, that fourteen million is not very, very much, it shows up in, and then, of course, we have the incremental levy. That's why we see the big increase from two thousand twenty-three to, to two thousand twenty-four. And then, the fall-off after that is due to the levy, that we'll have to, the tangible personal property tax, that's the second line, that's, that is, we call it PUP, but it's actually, in the old days, remember, inventory was taxed as tangible personal property, it's no longer taxed, but, so that is all public utilities. Substations, power lines, um, uh, gas pipelines, we have a little bit of a gas pipeline here. It's, it generates maybe two hundred fifty thousand dollars in revenue, so it's not a huge deal for us, but it does cause some fluctuations, and, and you'll see next year make a slight increase in PUP, but after that, I'm forecasting decreases as, as that infrastructure is depreciated. And the income tax, um, I'm forecasting three point two percent annual increase going, going out, like I said, this year was about ten percent um, over last year, I don't know if that's sustainable, um, and if you think, if you think of, if you talk to the economists right now, are forecasting a, uh, a, a, you call any recession mild, but a short and shallow recession. And, you know, and that's, you know, the Fed, we're at all-time low in unemployment, right? And the Fed wants to get that unemployment up, it sounds crazy, but in order to drive inflation down. You know, I remember my, in college economics, professor beating our heads, he says, you can't have un, low unemployment and low inflation. You can't have both at the same time, and we had a decade of essentially that, and the Fed's trying to get us to, you know, maybe four, four and a half percent unemployment to get inflation down to two to three percent.
So, is this, is this increase predicted based upon the number of workforce, or the salaries?
Just the trend in the salaries. Yeah, remember, we're a bedroom community, so it's, it's, it's not, we're not, we're not, we don't generate, we generate from residents, not from people who work in, whereas the city's the opposite, right? If you work in the city, you pay city income tax, right? You don't pay school if you only should live in the, in the district. And, um, okay, this is where I wanna spend some time. This is, and I have, that's why the double ask, unrestricted state aid, and this is where the fair funding formula comes in. And here's the, the big assumption, I'm gonna share with the impact of this here in a minute. Right now, the base costs are at two thousand eighteen level, which is, the House has already passed legislation to increase that to two thousand twenty-two. Woo-hoo, I mean, it's, 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 it's really good, and by the way, this is a shameless plug, contact Senator Gavro, please, and have her support that. Okay? And I'll show you, 'cause it makes a huge, it'll make a significant difference for us. I'm also assuming that we're adding about a hundred students a year, and that in two thousand twenty-five, yeah, and this is one of those that's, we can debate, going to all-day tuition-free kindergarten. And that impacts the revenue, I'll show you, but what it does is adds the number of students we're funded for, 'cause we're funded right now for half a student for kindergarten, so for a hundred-some students, we get funded for two hundred. If we go to tuition-free, we get funded for all four hundred kids, right? So, so it, it, it doesn't show up as much on this as it would in the base cost or increase. So those are the key, the two key assumptions that are really, I think, questionable are the base costs, and whether or not we wanna include tuition, um, all-day kindergarten, tuition-free in there.
Not if space is available.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm assuming, I'm assuming we're gonna find the space and, and, and that kinda thing.
Going back to the facilities, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so, yeah, and this is, this is, we've already seen this, this is, well, I've gone to this point based on two thousand eighteen base cost, right? Now, it's, there's a lot of numbers here, I apologize for it. But in two thousand
You see, I work, and I'm starting to stress out.
Here's what, here's what you, here's what you'll look at, and I should have bought, put boxes around them. Look at fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and look in the first blue, you see our positive ca, um, cash flow at year one hundred ninety-three thousand. Go down to the next one, down to two thousand twenty-two, then same column, you see two million dollars positive. Look at the next year, negative, um, ninety-five, nine point five million, negative six point eight. That's the impact of the base cost change. Okay, and what happens is, in the, the first year, it's just gonna, we're gonna get funded for all students, and in the second year, you should really see the impact of all-day kindergarten, because what happens is we get funded for all those students, but more, more importantly, the divisor and our wealth is divided by a bigger number, 'cause we have more students, right? The wealth calculation's based on funded students, not, um, physical students. So, if they, we may have four hundred kindergarten students, but they only, if they only count in half, we're looking wealthier per student.
Yeah, if I can jump in, I know there's been some commentary about, well, vouchers, if we have a bunch of kids leave, that's better for us, 'cause we get to keep that money. Randy just made the point in the example, if those kids leave, we become a wealthier district, and the state sends us less money, and we receive less, so. So, we're, it, it swings both ways, so people say, well, you should be getting, people who say that don't understand school funding, uh, because that's not how it works at all.
And we're, and we're talking about going from like fourteen hundred dollars per student on base cost to eighteen hundred, or something like that, up to two thousand, out to twenty twenty-seven. So we're talking about increased state share in base cost, but we're not talking about five thousand dollars, we're going from fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars in base cost. So, so that's, so, so the consum, the consumption, the assumption of two thousand eighteen base cost, as you can see, is fairly, is conservative for us, and if it, if it happens, then all-day kindergarten ends up being really a no-brainer. If we have a space. Okay, or if we make the space, in fact, it probably, at that point, it's probably cost-effective to try to find some way to make the space.
Why, why Randy pointed out the Senate is important is, um, they're beginning to take testimony on the House bill, which, which includes, uh, base costs based on two thousand twenty-two inputs, and, um, the Senate is beginning the conversation with, uh, two thousand and twenty base costs or inputs, so, so they're starting with a, you know, a, a, a lower amount than what you're seeing here.
Two thousand twenty would be better than two thousand eighteen, but it doesn't take us all the way here. Another thing to notice, look in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we end up with, um, cash balance of eight point five million versus three point eight, all right? So, we're still gonna, we're still have to renew a levy, you know, in there, but, um, we're, we're, we're
Five million dollars better off on the levy.
And protect, potentially, the, the ask becomes a little bit lower, or, you know, we could, eh, go out a little bit farther, there's some things there. So, there, there's gonna have to be a levy ask, it's just a matter of where, where it is.
So they have not decided the twenty-two base cost?
They have not, it's in the, it's in the Senate right now. That's why we, like I said, called Teresa. Okay, any other, so, I'm at two thousand eighteen, I think that's a, that's a place to be, 'cause that's, we know is, is, is good, and if it, if the, if we, if we get our wish, we can certainly update this and news is ended.
If it gets stuck at twenty twenty, would it be kind of like?
It'd be in between, yeah. If, at twenty twenty, all-day kindergarten still is a really good decision for us. It just is not gonna be as, quite as positive to the, to the bottom line.
It, it shifts more money away from, it, basically, by going with twenty twenty-one, the, the whole point of the, the funding formula is this balance between the state share and the local share. And, you know, constitutionally, it says we, we, we both have to have this responsibility together. So Randy earlier talked about how the valuations are increasing, right? Um, that's happening in real time, but the state, by saying we're gonna go to twenty twenty-two, the why we are talking about that input, is that the, that's the last, that's the most current update, in terms of the averages that go into the state, the state, um, you know, formula. By ignoring that, going to twenty twenty, you create this imbalance, because you're using today's valuations, which are going up by twenty percent, with state inputs that are three years old. So the state is basically saying, you guys need to update, and, and your local community is responsible for paying more, because we're choosing to look at this old data, which makes it easier on us. And, and that, 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 then all of a sudden, the formula that we have, it doesn't really work, because it relies on the state and, and the, the local coming to the table together, using the most current data available. And choosing to ignore that results in the, the retired widower who lives near one of our elementary schools having to pay more, because it's that dollar amount, as Randy points out, shifts, you know, less from the state, that's a bigger ask to that widower who's retired, because the state's not coming to the table with updated numbers. So, so, so it's, it's, even if it goes to twenty twenty, it's, it's better than twenty eighteen, but still, like, acknowledging, you guys need to update your numbers, which automatically happens, and we're choosing not to, and you're gonna have to make that difference up.
And you're trying, and trying to offset costs that are amplified by what at least since twenty twenty has been historical replacement?
Yes, yeah, and, and when, what happens is, I don't, I don't have it here, and I showed this when I testified at the House Finance Committee, is that two thousand eighteen base costs, let's say our state share is fourteen hundred dollars per student, by twenty twenty-seven, it's, that's eight hundred dollars, because we've gotten wealthier, which has not, you know, increased that. At twenty twenty base costs, we're at fourteen hundred, by twenty twenty-seven, it might be fifteen hundred dollars per student. So, at least we haven't lost as much ground, and twenty twenty-two, then it actually, you know, it's proportional, and really what it does is, if you don't update the cost, the formula doesn't mean anything for, for us. It just doesn't, you just might as well just throw a, a number at the wall, and here's what, and go back to what we were at that, at that point, so.
At the underlying tenet of the Fair Funding Act, and I'm, I'm talking to Tom Hauser now about this, and I should be careful, but to actually fund the costs of every student from the morning they come in to the morning, or to the moment they leave, we're not basing it off of the actual costs to fund that student.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, um, no, you're good, not perfect, that's why, we didn't have a chance to rehearse this, so it's, it's all good, but again, I'm going back to the bottom line on this, so if you look at going out to, if we renewed, um, the current, um, fixed-it-sum income levy at the point that it is today, all right, so it's no increase, it just, whatever it ends up with, that's what we stay, in twenty twenty-seven, we are obviously in trouble, but in twenty twenties, uh, in, uh, two thousand eighteen base cost, but two thousand twenty-two, we're still, you know, we're still gonna want, need more, asking for more money, but it, we're, we're, we're a much healthier situation. That's a swing of almost twelve million dollars over the next five years, if, because, does that base cost change? Yeah, so, that's why it's, that's why it's important to us. Anyway, but again, for, for our purposes, the forecast, I'm assuming the, 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 the more pessimistic position at, at this point.
And I don't wanna get this conversation too far off-topic, but your assumption here of these, um, renewals and replacements, are those renewal numbers that you're putting?
That, that assumes that, that incremental sum levy, and it's last year, wherever that ends up, we renew it exactly.
Renew it exactly, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's
I think any of it, the replacement.
They want to, yes. Well, because, we, we get, that's a whole other discussion. We'd have to do a substitute, the, the reason they want, they're, well, okay. Okay, because there's, there's some big legally with it that is to, to the district's advantage to do a replacement in terms of language and stuff, right? Essentially, they wanna be able to say, it's a new levy, because that language has a different connotation than replacing, or some, if you know what I mean, like, come out and say, hey, Sue, I need you to pass this new levy, versus, hey, Sue, would you please replace this levy? Right?
There's a messaging, yeah.
Yeah.
Or renew.
Or renew.
That was one of Tim Brown's big things, that he was very, he wanted that changed. The numbers that you're giving us between the twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, that's affecting us, is that a similar scenario across the state for all the schools, or?
Not, not necessarily, um, the, we have, we have a, well, valuation impacts us across the state. We're a growing district, that makes, that makes a difference, and districts aren't growing, and our wealth factors are, are higher, right? All those things play into this, so every district's a little bit, a little bit different.
Yeah, the formula focuses on what's happening within your boundaries, and then your, your state and local, um, balancing act, that we talked about, shifts based on what's happening in your district, so Switzerland, Ohio, which is, you know, um, was one of the poorest school districts, and when I say poorest, we're talking about how ODE defines wealth, which is, um, your property valuation. Um, and then they became one of the top five wealthiest in the state because of, you know, fracking and pipelines. So, um, so that district, um, right now is on a guarantee, um, so they were getting a lot of state aid, because they were poor. ODE, and, and now they're getting all this local wealth, but the state says you have to get the same amount. So as the formula moves forward, the state will start to shift, so a district like Switzerland would get less state aid, because they're getting more local aid. So that would be a scenario where, um, there would be a, you know, a less favorable outcome from state aid, but the reason why is your value, you're one of the wealthiest school districts in, in the state now, so the state probably shouldn't be sending you, you know, that much money as they were before that happened, so. So there are some, you know, things that, that will fluctuate, and, you know, it, it corrects a couple things, because the old formula was really broken, um, and, and it kind of begins to correct some of those things, so one of the things that, that happened, we were on a cap, so we'd get a hundred new students a year. The state would say, we can't afford to fund those students on the old formula, so we're gonna cap it at twenty-five students a year, a new. And then that caused us to have to rely more heavily on the local voters. So under the formula, you can see how we're getting money for every one of those kids, which makes it less of an impact on the local voters, so that's a good thing. But there were districts that were on that guarantee, that were on the guarantee in the old funding, because they were losing students. So the state said, we're gonna give you the same amount, so District Day, you're gonna get the same level of funding, next year, you lose a hundred kids, you're gonna get funded for those hundred kids, even though they're not there. And if that district then says, we are going to be open enrollment, and we're gonna draw new students in, they get the money for those hundred students that aren't there, and then they would get additional bonus dollars for every one of those students from outside the district. And, and so, that created this weird windfall for those districts, and, and this will be corrected, and say, we're gonna fund you for the kids that are actually there, and, um, that, um, that would, that's impacting those districts that have, you know, made out pretty well. So, um, so, so, yeah, so there's a couple of examples of how that teeter-totter will kind of adjust, um, a little differently for different districts.
Um, property tax allocation, that is just, that's that, discounts that we would get on our, our property tax, the state makes a difference, that's what House Bill One was going after, and, and didn't, that just moves with, with our local revenue, and all other revenue, um, you see the big drop from twenty-four to twenty-five, and all other revenue, that's the impact, most of that's all-day kindergarten tuition. Now, there's also some interest as I, as our cash balances drop, and I, I'm making the assumption interest rates are, I'm not gonna continue to get four and five percent, you know, a, a year or so out, now, I could be surprised, but the biggest drop in that is all-day kindergarten. So, while we get it up at top, we're, we're, it's gonna come out there. So while we get it up a top, we're, we're, it's gonna come out there.
And, and I'm presuming that's a dollar, is it essentially dollar for dollar?
We actually, if, um, if the base costs are updated, then we end up ahead.
We end up ahead of the, okay.
Right, if, if it doesn't, it's, you're talking about a $400,000 negative, right?
Yeah, the tuition now doesn't cover the operational cost to do it.
But, but the, the gap would be even bigger if we don't have the tuition.
Yeah.
If we don't have the, right.
Right, that $700,000 that the parents are paying for those students is very, very important, there's still a gap between there and where our actual costs are, but that 700 goes away, we'll get a little bit more state funding, but it's not going to cover all that 700, so the gap gets bigger. And so it's just a decision that, you know, it's like, if we're a supermarket, we would say that's a lost leader or something, you know?
So a decision that's on the table with the Fair Funding Act, a decision that I heard the word's no brainer if they had to.
Yeah, so I, I put it in the forecast, we all know it's there, we get into next year, you know, well, there's no decision been made on that, that's gonna have to be a board decision sometime next, probably fall, early winter, we'll make that decision, can, can we find the classroom space and then we'd have to make it official sometime mid next, next year. So it's in the forecast, but obviously it's easy to pull out if we decide not to go that way.
How many full-time kindergarten?
Um.
It's like 80% of our kindergarten.
Basically 80% of families choose it and there'll be, um, four, five, six, 12 sections, or sorry, three at Frank, three at Toth, three at Fort Meigs, four at Woodland.
Are full day.
Are, are, will be full day next year, yeah, they're full day now and will be full day next year.
So if you're all full time, how many more sections would that be?
Well, that's a little more complicated because it depends on what we're going to set the class size threshold at. So if we keep it at 25, which right now it's maxed out at 25 because it's tuition based and it's not required, it really only would be one additional section each, well, probably one additional classroom at, at Woodland and one additional classroom at Fort Meigs because they currently have an AM and PM in addition to their full day classes. Right now, we only have one section that has a classroom anyway at Frank and Toth, so it may be only one additional classroom, but it's one additional classroom in the biggest buildings already. But if we set the class size down around 22, which is what we try to kind of keep it for, for first grade, then that's additional, that's an additional classroom because there would be an additional teacher. So it, it kind of, we're gonna have to kind of make a decision about what do we want to set that at, um, in terms of class size, because then it could be two additional classrooms. Now, I think it can be done, I've talked to the elementary principals, but it's going to take some shifting where they're likely going to have to move, especially at those bigger buildings, the whole grade level, fourth grade out to the portable, just like fifth grade was several years ago before HPI opened. Right now, they're kind of using those rooms for gifted and they're all being used, but not necessarily a whole class or whole grade, sorry, not whole class, whole grade levels out there. It might be two sections of fourth grade and the other two sections are able to be inside, so it just, it can, it likely can be done, it's just going to take some restructuring of some of those other classes that like intervention classes, gifted, how are we gonna restructure that, so?
So like at Fort Meigs, we have 29 students that are in half-day program, um, and they have a morning and then an afternoon. So that classroom is, we have one classroom for half-day, so we would need another classroom without the split. You know, at Woodland, it's the same scenario, there's two sections. And then, um, at Frank, there's one section, so we have a classroom that's already dedicated, you know, during a portion of the day, and then the same at Toth. So, um, so we're looking at probably a net of, like Brooke said, two to three additional classrooms that we've been defined. That's, you know, a challenge, but I think it's a, it's a good challenge.
Yeah.
It's where we need to be heading towards.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously if, if financially we can swing it, I know from an educational standpoint and from a principal standpoint, they would definitely be all for that if, if it, if it can work. I think they're like, we will figure out a way to do it, because, you know, like so educational speaking, educationally speaking, it would be, be a great thing to be able to do, but also we have to financially be able to operate it, so.
So I'm a little confused with, because you said that if we did all day kindergarten, then they're counted as whole students and we get the added funding because now we are not as wealthy of a district.
Right.
How am I doing?
Good.
But on that last line there, it sounded more negative, though all day kindergarten tuition because that $700,000 is gone, so now we've got a gap.
Well, the, the, the key is the base costs, because what hap, because of that base cost calculation, we're funded for all the students, but we're not funded at appropriate level for all the students. Okay? So we're not gonna, we're not gonna get as much for all the students. And in that first year, we're not 100% phased in yet on the fair funding formula, so it's a combination of things. So updating that makes it a no-brainer because it gets the, the, the funding per student up. That, that makes sense, right? So we're getting a little bit more, we would get a little bit more funding, just not as, not as much as we would, we would like.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
And that's a function of the fact that the funding formula isn't fully updated.
As well, it's, it's not, it's not, it's, it's being phased in and the base costs are too low, because they could, they could fully fund, and we had this conversation, it was asked of us, and in our testimony, well, what would your preference, we update base costs or, or fully phase it, go to 100%? There's no brainer, the, the base cost is more important to us than the phasing. Say that correctly.
The other thing, just for, I think the board to be aware of too, in terms of space, is our enrollment department's working really closely with transportation, so as new developments are, you know, as those are on our radar, we're kind of, the city is also sending us notices of when there might be any zoning changes. So we're looking at that and we're having to have conversations, especially with some of the potential new neighborhoods, about is there a way to structure where certain students may go in neighborhoods that aren't existing yet and trying to route some of those to Frank and Toth to make sure we're not gonna overload the buildings that already have about 150 more kids than those other two buildings? Because we, I know, obviously the facility committee, you know, hopefully we can move forward with, with that work, because that would ultimately remedy a lot of this, but in the meantime, we have to keep a really close eye on that to kind of strategically figure out how we can maybe do something like all day kindergarten, but also make it work logistically.
And, and, yeah. Such a good conversation covering so many other things, sorry Randy, thanks for adulting us, but, you know, also in there too is a conversation between, with, within this board about how we participate better with the city in some of that decision and awareness and education of some of that zoning impact.
And I think the, the conversation is really good because.
Intention, oh, yeah, it's most of the times.
There's, there's nothing we do in a vacuum, right? I don't sit on my side of the hallway and count beans without the, the integration on the other side, so it's, it's not, you know, there, there's, there's a teeter totter there that's for almost everything we do and this is, it's all part of it. So if you don't mind, let me move on to expenditures a little bit. I'm, I'm gonna spend most of my time on the biggest line items, which is the first two personnel cost and benefit. So, you know, that's, you know, 62 million out of the 76 million in our general fund budget, so, um, so there's, I couldn't quite do it the same way because the, the chart's so big, but so let me get on three things on this. When we look at expenditures for personal costs, there's two key drivers, contractual stuff, which are, you know, our salary schedules, right? Steps, um, changes for education and negotiated, um, cost of living increases. And then new positions, so those are the two, the two big drivers. When we look at personnel costs and particularly adding new positions, here's our, Tom and Brooke jump in here, our three, when we have these conversations about what are our three priorities? If it's compliance, we have to do it. If we're, if it's being driven by enrollment, typically class size, number of students, and in some cases, one and two go together, so it's not just one or the other sometimes. And then if we have space, then number three, what, adding this staff, what, what's the impact on students and staff? You know, what, what's gonna give us the bang for that position dollar? So when we, when we had, we had lots and lots of conversations and if you look at Don Christie's list of all the requests, it's, it's big. So here's where we're ending up, and I want to be really transparent about that, built, built into the forecast for this coming year are these, these are the new positions. High school business teacher mandated, four new intervention specialists, we've got some movements and stuff like that, psychologist, occupational therapist, all, those are all driven by compliance, caseloads, number of students in the program. Adding two new elementary teachers, again, because of enrollment and class sizes, um, and I think the, the HPI math teacher is, that's kind of an enrollment as well as a impact on, on students. STEM teacher, again, for, that's a, that's an impact kind of question. And then for scheduling the elementary providing program for the students, we're adding an assistant librarian that helps with the scheduling of the specials. Got that right?
Yeah, Randy, the, the, I think the HPI STEM teacher shows, it's an elementary STEM teacher, but yeah.
And so it's, and then, um, and then health aide at the high school, and that just, that's driven by.
Safety.
That's a, you know, that's the, you know, while we call it a health aide, people need to understand that that's the school nurse and dealing with what, 1,700 kids on our own.
Right, right, exactly.
1,700 kids on our own.
Yep. And two monitors here at HPI and then one, it's, it's not very glamorous, but in the IT department, we're adding a tech, but you got, you know, we're adding one-to-one devices all the time and the load to keep up with that. And those techs are in, are in the buildings, dealing with student devices and stuff. So that's, when we look at, um, this coming year, that's what we're adding, that's a brief summary of why. And, and how we get there and what I've done, it's almost, I've kind of looked at our student growth and put, let's say this year, I'm, I'm gonna round it, but let's say a million dollars in new staff, it wasn't, not that much for class, for all positions and certified getting the biggest chunk of that. And then working with Don, um, Brooke and Tom, then within that, what can we do? And, and, and so we literally keep track of, hey, we hired this person at step two, this person's step three, and so, you know, when I, so I'm not, so I'm able to go, this is what that person is gonna, our investment this person's gonna be in the end, then we actually had budgetary space to be able to add the STEM teacher and the, and the librarian. So they were not on our original approved list, but we got there and we, 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 some of our replacements were at lower cost and some of our new positions are a little bit lower, so we said, okay, we need these positions, they were, are justified, we have the budgetary space for them. So that's, that's the logic for how we got to that place. Does, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just think, yeah, I mean, Randy really does a good job of saying, hey guys, this is what, what you've got, and so the, I think some of you have seen the requests, there are significantly more requests than what you see up here, so this is truly what was whittled down to, these are really the needs to continue to operate, um, just schedules and safety, compliance means what really is needed.
I would like to, I always like to bring my lens of, you know, special education, but when you look at that compliance and enrollment, you know, depending on what students are enrolled, your class sizes are limited to eight or 10 based on student need, you know, and based on their IEP, which is based on FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education, so while Gen Ed could be 22 to 28 kids, you might only have eight in a specialized classroom and that's the max, so you can't put 16 in there by law. So that's why the, you know, you're gonna need the extra additional, extra staff that people aren't aware of.
Yeah, and we're, we're not out of compliance right now.
No, I know that, but when people see that, that's my, that's my lens, because people always think, well, we didn't add 50 kids, well, it's not 50 kids, it could be, it could be 16 specialized kids and that's two, that's two teachers.
That's a great point, yeah, as we're adding 100 students, to your point, we're, we watched those numbers and, and, you know, last year, we didn't hire as many IAs as we did, but, but, you know, if we add 100 students, 12% of those may be students on IEPs, so that one or, you know, 12 students spread out over the district doesn't seem like a lot, but with the lower threshold, so we're projecting forward, plus kids move from building to building. So now you're joining a classroom with kids that are in that building, so what does that do to the level? So that's kind of what we do, so next year, hopefully you won't see the, the need for that many, because we'll be good for a couple of years and then we'll, you know, with students growing, we'll have to grow a little bit, so, um, and, and again, we have those pressure points that Randy and Brooke talked about, so.
Any questions on that? Personnel obviously is our, by far our biggest cost and I think, and, and, and it's one of those things that it's not always visible and people don't understand and sort of try to.
I was gonna say, I appreciate the detail and the experience that you're giving and how you look at this and what it means to the community and the impact on the budget, which is, the impact on the budget is, it is still within.
Wait, so what we forecasted, right?
And then we talked about there are a lot of these tests, still based on the forecast.
So you're saying those first four out there were due to compliance? That's pretty interesting.
The first five, yeah, teacher, business teacher, intervention, psychologist, occupational therapist are, are all due to for compliance. Caseload or, um, or curriculum compliance.
And there's actually seven positions, seven compliance, yeah.
And, and for the teacher positions too, we do a whole projected enrollment report where we wait till kindergarten registration's over, um, well, till the, we figure out how many are full day, how many are half day initially, look at trend data and then roll every grade level up and sit down with the elementary as a team and, and look at that union contract, you know, trying to keep it 25 and under, or we usually try to go, give us a little cushion of first, because we know we get an influx of people coming in from different kindergartens, so we, we kind of look a lot, a lot of that and give our predictions, so it's not, it's not just like a shot in the dark, there's, there's a lot of trends that are looked at to do that.
And being on personnel, you know, I, I appreciate the detailed way and I, you know, I'm the superintendent committee for personnel and, you know, the detail, I mean, it is not an exact science, but I think the district does a fantastic job with what we're saying and the projections and the enrollment trend, um, you know, so we, that is discussed in, in detail.
And the other thing, there's nothing to show here, I just, we've also taken two teachers on special assignments and moved them back in the classroom to, 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 to keep this, to help this. So it's not just adding, we had some positions that, they were, they were adding value where they were, but we need, we need them in front of students.
Prioritizing their needs.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Thank you for adding that.
So again, expenditures, I'm talking about first, the first two lines, the, the next biggest line is purchase services. And for most case, I've added inflationary increases except for special education. We've had a conversation with that department, we, for better or worse, we do, we do a good job with those kiddos and people want to be in, in this district and we're so forecast, so it forecasts extra needs in that area and a lot of our, you know, obviously we have intervention specialist, psychologists, occupational therapists, but other services, we contract with ESCs, Wood County, um, Lake Erie West for certain things, and so in 2024, there, there's a bump up for those. But again, it's a, it's a projection based on what they, what, um, that department is telling us they have coming at them. And the biggest chunk of that is our paraprofessionals, um, which we get through Wood County ESC. We'd like to bring them in-house, but it's, doesn't, budgetary, it's expensive.
And again, compliance.
Compliance, there are also some compliance there. Again, that service, the only thing other, other significant change is, you haven't seen yet, we've talked about in finance and operations, but I can see additional lease purchased at $250,000 in 2024. I was at the regular meeting, I'm gonna probably put in front of you to approve, we're gonna upgrade the lighting in all the buildings in the district that are not LED already, exterior, which has its cost savings. The boiler and the chillers, the high school are shot, they have to be done, we're gonna, we need to do them, then we gotta fix the Commodore building, so we're gonna do that all at once. Some of that, not all of it, hopefully will get rolled into the facilities project. But I'm gonna show the total impact here and we're gonna split the cost between general fund and permanent improvement.
Wow.
Okay? So, but hopefully that goes, at least partially goes away. And some of that could also be, we have some money from a TIF that goes from the Commodore building that could recover some of that potentially too.
What's the TIF?
Tax, it's Levess Commons, gives us a certain amount of money as part of that tax payment. So just to wrap up, we're in good shape in the near term, obviously base cost and funding is the key, enrollment growth is a key driver. Obviously, we need a levy replacement strategy, once we know what's happening with the biennium, I think we, we have to have that convers, real serious conversation on that. And then obviously, our, you know, cost controls best we can, it's hard, hard to cut costs when you're growing, right? But we've got to stay on it, you know, it's, it's the little things, it's the blocking and tackling, it's. It's talking about, you know, paper usage, copy usage and things that we have control over, you know. We don't have any control over the compliance. We're gonna staff it. But what do we have control over? And if we can, you know, I look at it this way, every dollar we save outside the classroom is a dollar we can invest in the classroom potentially. That's in details. I've, 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 I'm looking, Sue's eyes are going counterclockwise to each other, so we're okay. I hit it, I hit it exactly right.
I think we got, I think we asked lots of questions.
No, good. Okay, that makes, so at the board meeting, I won't go into, obviously, I'm not going into this detail. I'm gonna hit things at a high level. You've got the details behind it. If, if, if you're okay with the all-day kindergarten assumption, the base cost assumption, I'm gonna proceed in that, in that direction.
Well, we got it.
What's that?
We have one more shot.
So we approve this in May?
May.
Maybe what I always looked at was kind of the, uh, first draft, that it gets approved in May. More formalized in November, which your process is pretty robust.
It's, 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 you need to approve it. We know it, as soon as you've approved it, some could have changed, right? And typically, and we can file updates anytime we want, but typically unless there's a, unless there's a, um, material change, we don't worry about it. If the base costs get approved, maybe we might wanna refile. Update, update the forecast.
That's a good point.
But normally we don't, because we have a chance in November to update it.
What, yeah, when would we know that? July? Like, when do we think that we? Yeah, when do we think they'll make a decision on that? Do you know, Tom?
So right now, the Senate started, um, hearing testimony this week on, on the budget. So the House passed, the governor introduced the biennium budget and it starts in the House. The House had hearings and, and made adjustments, added amendments. They did a substitute bill that passed out of the House. And then it goes to the Senate. So the Senate starts with that and then they break apart, send it to the different committees, testimony. And then they create a plan. And that plan will be very different from the House plans. Now you have a House plan and a Senate plan. They repres- they pick people from the House and the Senate to come together in a conference committee and then they hash out and negotiate, um, the final bill that will be voted by both houses. That conference committee is not open to the public. It's private. It's negotiations. And, and, um, you know, so we're really working hard to try to get the, that, that funding level, two thousand and twenty-two, the input year. So that it doesn't go to the conference committee and have to be hashed out there, because that's where things pop up that nobody had any. There was no testimony on this. There was no discussion. All of a sudden, it's in the budget passed, you know, at eleven PM on June thirtieth, the day before the new budget starts, which is July. So they, so to answer your question, I mean, if everything goes well and they, they iron it out, um, it, it could be, you know, sometime in June. But typically, the last couple have been like the last minute, June thirtieth, June twenty-ninth, it's, it's the last. And that's the conference committee. So, so the Senate could pass the budget by June first, but then they gotta negotiate with the House.
I think they have a lot to do.
Well, hopefully, you know, in there, there's a couple of positives too, though, with that third grade reading guarantee.
Yeah.
Retention. And I don't know if anybody saw that, but the, um, um, removal of the third grade retention of students who haven't passed the test. No fall test. And, um, the other was what, the reduction of, um, what was it? The free and reduced lunch? Automatically get a free lunch, I think, was in that one too.
Yeah.
Am I correct? I think. They all kind of matched those.
What was the big deal of not giving a kind of like a pre-test in the fall? I mean, I, I, that's the whole purpose of a pre-test, is to show the growth.
Well, I think that was what we learned the other day.
Yesterday.
It was just too soon, too late. Just get into school, test them, give them a chance to be who you are. Get a zap into the environment and.
Teaching or testing kindergarteners twenty days with them at the start of school, and they still try to figure out where the bathrooms are at.
Use a mouse.
What school is about.
Kids don't even know how to use a mouse, because they're so used to touchscreens. Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Just give them chairs to catch it.
We test way too much.
There are a lot going on, including, um, Senate bill to keep the superintendent and treasurer from advocating for anything.
The, and thanks to Tom, thanks to Tom for pointing that out. Um, OSBE was not aware of that. And so they, they know about it now, because I, I really pushed it. It's that, that would have, if that bill was in effect now, that would have killed the fair school funding formula. Maybe that's the point. I don't know.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, they don't want those in education telling people what's actually going on. I mean, how many educators are at the state level? I mean, come on.
Like zero.
Who, why would you wanna hear from a superintendent and a treasurer what's actually going on in the building? Or educators at all was part of that. Come on, let's get rid of people.
None of that mindset can expand it outside of education.
Well, come on, what, could you imagine no doctors being on a medical review board? I mean. I mean, come on, you know, they heaven forbid you want educated people explaining what goes on in the business.
And the testimony, I mean, Randy does a great job testifying and, and legislators learn from that. And, and if you take out that whole opportunity, I mean, it's hard to get legislators to, 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 to be. Their schedules are just.
I mean, it's just.
Oh, come on.
Some of the stupid stuff that comes across there is just unbelievable. Oh, there, that explains a lot.
Not, not, not the president Huffman, but his cousin is the one that introduced that bill.
That testimony was interesting.
It was.
Yeah, it was really good. I listened to it on my way down to Columbus for a conference. Yeah, it was good.
Okay, thank you, Randy, Brooke, Tom. Thanks for, for the.
Thanks for the discussion.
Yeah, very good. Uh, yeah, more to come. So we've got, you know, more questions, more comments. You have an opportunity to talk to anyone in administration. We've got operations and finance committee. Um, opportunities to talk about this again. I'm sure we'll talk about it again in the upcoming finance meeting. Again, in the next board meeting in May, where we will, it'll be on the agenda to approve. Okay, we have, uh, one item that is time-sensitive to take care of as far as a consent, are we calling it the consent at then? I guess not. So we've got an action to take on item four. Um, can I have a motion to accept item four point one? Ms. Laramer or, uh, Mr. Paulman? And roll call, please.
Ms. Laramer?
Yes.
Mr. Paulman?
Yes.
Dr. Rufford?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes. Next item, any other board discussion for this morning? Just remember the high school spirit award, vote, vote, vote every day.
Thank you.
Very cool.
What a, what a nice opportunity for the district to recognize.
Do you know when the vote is over?
May?
Oh, is it May?
Yeah, it's coming up.
It's not where we are in the standings, but it doesn't show.
It doesn't show you, yeah. It doesn't show where you stack up with the other schools in the running. But yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars for the high school if we.
You know, I don't know if you noticed, in the musicals program, we spent time in strategic planning, talked about welcoming. But one of the, one of the stage crew, I believe, said, thank you for welcoming me, the other folks welcoming us. Wow, we spent time talking about that and the kids are discussing, thank you for that.
Well, thanks for bringing that up. If you did not get to see Into the Woods, it was so, so good. Lucas and I went Sunday afternoon and it was, our, it's just amazing how talented our students are.
Very talented.
It was, it was, it was just such a good show. Such, well, they always are good shows.
Well, the talent, that's the way they.
The talent, well, what are we, this is seventeen consecutive year for, uh, that music award and music community. Yeah, I mean, you can see why.
Yeah, an amazing, fun time too. A graduation coming up commencement ceremony, so I'm sure there's more, more to come on that here in the coming weeks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll update the board on their roles. It's exciting.
It's a big, big for, uh, Dr. Rufford, big moment.
Prom. You know, I just, I just got a little, uh, for Clumpton, I wanna say, as this, while I'm on the board, I would like to, in a public comment almost. As a parent of, of, you know, two students who've gone through Harrisburg, we just had Lucas's end of program, um, meeting yesterday, because he's, you know, he deferred graduation. And so, um, I am not a crier, but, um, the growth our, my child has made, uh, since he was diagnosed at, um, two and a half with autism is unbelievable. He actually drove, um, our golf cart at the campground last weekend. Um, you know, and just what he's been able to do and accomplish because of the district and because of the caring educators we have. Um, it, it, um, I can't thank people enough. And so I, I look really forward to graduation. So if I'm a blubbering mess when I hand Lucas his diploma, just nobody say anything to me. Just somebody hand me the tissues, because you know, it'll be, yeah, but it's just, he's going to prom, um, with another classmate of his on Saturday, uh, the thirteenth, so.
That was a cute picture.
She's, she's four foot six and he's six foot one. So it's gonna be interesting. So yeah, but it's just, um, you know, and speaking to parents, yeah, so we, that what we do, people don't, um, it's not measurable sometimes.
Graduation's gonna be Huntington Center.
Yes, correct. Yeah, and we'll get you the details in particulars on when to arrive.
Excited. Yep.
Okay, I am gonna move us a little, look, I'm gonna move around the agenda here a little bit and say, uh, I will ask for a motion to adjourn and then for those available, we will do it to it.
Thank you.
If that's, if that's okay, so.
So moved?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And roll call, please.
Dr. Rufford?
Yes.
Ms. Laramer? Mr. Paulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes. And we don't allow public participation at work sessions, but, you know, I just wanted to recognize and thank you for coming.
Hi, good morning.
You'd raise your hand, I didn't know if you had.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if I could come to a working session.
Absolutely.
I'm actually here on behalf of Perry Group Voice Volleyball, not probably what Mr. House was thinking I'm here for, but I understand the board has to approve fundraising efforts. And we want to do a boys clinic in the summer for a couple of days. And if we wait till your next public meeting, your regular meeting, it's too late to advertise and get that going. So I wanted to put that out to you for consideration, um, two days in May and, and June to run clinics for fifth, I think coming fifth or ninth graders for the fall, that the high school boys athletes on the volleyball team with their coaches would put on for the year.
So we have a process for that?
Yeah, I'll get your name and contact information and have a Mr. Appke reach out to you to get that moving.
Okay, I do have this email, so I can.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can, we can, we talked about how we get that. We, we can work out.
Okay, awesome, thanks. This has been super educational. I learned a game.
You did, you did one.
You learned a lot.
This was a good one to come to.
Are we adjourned? Sorry, okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.